And if I don't have discussion or hearing with motion?
My recollection, I wasn't worried on the discussion. My recollection is that we're working from at large, from at large, that that is a decision to be decided by the voters. And it has to go, we would vote for them, but ultimately it's the voters' decision.
Okay, I was going to mention that. Basically, what happens is if the board goes to move in this direction, he goes on the ballot when we go on the school budget in May, and then it would take place for the following school year, following election vote, the following school year. So it actually would take place in the spring of two thousand sixteen. If, if we were to do this. Any other discussion?
You have to piggyback on that, I believe it will go under your tone process, is that correct?
Yes.
So when you, when you look at this, the, you know, Lori and I were just sidebaring, thinking, I'm not really sure which way to go on this, but to throw another piece out for us to think about. A number of the school districts, they have a dense population that we see as, as leading into the school closing piece where you have schools, they have a really dense population base, and that we're going to worry, close a building or another, it might be easier to afford, or easier to understand, or easier to kind of get by and move on, and truly becomes more of a fiscal play than, than a set motion play, which we're all, which we're all dealing with here, and it's forwarded as well as in the audience encircling that, in the homes and communities and churches and diners up throughout the district. This situation is similar as well, because it is, it is so diverse, and it is one of the largest geographic districts in the state. Again, it's not so easy as to say, hey, let's just put it out there, because, you know, we should do what everybody else is doing. The other aspect of that is, is that are we willing to, you know, if you have one big, large civic organization, one big, huge one that is geographically central to a certain part of the district, for instance, are we all comfortable on this board, are we all comfortable as voters, as well realizing that it comes to the voters, but it's our decisions whether or not we're going to put it out there to the voters? Are we, are we comfortable with the board possibly just being inundated with a single issue in that volume? Now, I can see where there are some people in the audience right now who may, may think, yeah, I don't like something this board did, so interreaction with that, and saturate the number of people to try and get them on the board. And then that challenges the board's real work, which is acting positively, looking at whole, acting and challenging. Are we comfortable with, for instance, I know this is, you know, we're all familiar with separating the church and state, we all deal with it, and we all have our own opinions and thoughts on this. Are we comfortable hypothetically with the larger church in the town, in the village, basically saying, we want that board to be primarily filled with our congregation? And these are, again, I'm not saying that I am opposed, or that I've made a decision one way or another. I am, at least at minimum, starting to try to have, start to think about these decisions, and to say is, we don't need to just follow other boards. That, that has to stop. This state is jamming a direction, this state is looking to minimize the effect the boards across, across the entire state. The feds are looking to minimize the effectiveness of boards, and that's, that's really where I'm coming from. So we should just, I just want to think from that perspective before we decide.
In response to your question, um, one is, you could, twenty sixteen is when I left for elections, potentially I'm the first person, and you and myself and Dick actually running to this, it goes forward. The reality is, any community or area in our district could decide they want somebody up against somebody else. And the part that I don't like about that going against somebody else comes popularity contest, so it can go either way. It can really, it really can. But the other part of that is, I think, and I don't mean in the spirit of what you're saying, but I think you're making our voters sound like you're not able to make those decisions. And the reality is, let people vote, see how their vote, if they want to vote for these people, let's go to vote for these people. They shouldn't have to say, I'm going to vote for this person because she's running against this person, when in reality, I'd like her and him to be on board. And I, that's where I stand with it. I think it's a much more democratic process to be able to say, I'm passing my vote for those that I want to be in office, not those that I feel.
I, I, I worked very hard to craft what I was going to say, so as to not challenge anyone on the sitting board or anyone in the audience.
I'm just saying, I'm fine with it.
To say that I don't think the voters have the ability to decide couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, I referenced two bodies that are held in much higher regard than the House of Representatives and the Assembly with our state and federal senate. So I'm not saying that I don't think our board or the voters have the capacity to make educated decisions. I couldn't, I believe the absolute opposite of that. I'm also saying, to say that if we turn into a popularity contest, well, here's the deal, it's a popularity contest either way you do it.
It is, yeah, that's what I'm saying to you.
The difference is, is that one has, could have, if it went astray, or if you had low turnout, could, could see primarily on a board, a board of an agenda, as opposed to a board that is looking to collaborate with its citizens. So that's where I'm coming. There, there's a check and balance from the federal level and the state level, and our forefathers did that for a reason. There's a reason there's a senate, there's an assembly. So I'm saying, I don't think, at this point, I'm saying, I don't think we should so quickly dismiss that notion, and just say, well, let's rule the rest of the states. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm not saying we're doing this with the rest of the states saying, I'm saying, you know what, I'm, I mean, I'll be the first person to vote against it, and I'm typically fine with it. If someone feels they're not the best candidate, they should be on there, hopefully the better candidate, then maybe the public should vote to put that candidate on there. And that's how, now, you stand on your own merits, you don't stand on the fact of where you come from, or how many people you're going to become well. You stand on what you possibly can do, what you're ready to be able, and if you can't do that, then you shouldn't be sitting up here either.
And let me remind you, everybody, that it's, all we're doing is putting up a Republican term. We're not make, ultimately making a decision. Our decision is, do we put it up for a regular government or help put it up for a regular government? Just because if we decided to put it up for a regular government, doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to get passed.
Understood, but the board is, this board is also asked to be looking at what point realistically we best work this society and this community, which, you know, and I'm just pointing out that it's very much, right now, it's more like the senate. And actually, this is a watered-down version of what prior boards had wanted, known as board. When, when the school districts all came in today, there was representation much like what the senate is set up to do. So you did have representation from the original, you had representation from the square, you had representation from the basics, you had representation from North Shore. There are some in the audience who feel that some of the direction, I'm not taking this standpoint, Lori, I will go back on this. I had this conversation long before we went through the management situation, you all had a face last year. I, I thought about this as a civics teacher from years ago, I thought. It's not just so concrete that we've got it all wrong. In a lot of ways, I believe that the way in which we've set this up has allowed managers to have a function in the board, where there was representation from multiple areas, it was not just offset from one. And what I believe is that if it, if it goes in that direction, you could have many more taxpayers without representation, because it would be more likely to be a popularity contest. Where right now, the fact that it takes somebody to say, hey, I'm going to single somebody out, and I'm willing to say I'm a little bit more qualified than that person, and I call victims, that myself. Hey, I, I got beat, I'm willing to admit it, but it's not, I'm not taking this position because of me, or you, or two thousand sixteen. I'm saying, there should be a little bit more of a, hey, let's just throw my hat in the ring, and if I get enough popular votes, fine. What's, what's nice about the way our system is set up is that there's some skin being. You've got to call out potentially a seated board member, very much like the senate. You don't typically see senators step down on their own. It usually takes somebody with some moxie to say, I don't like the direction in which they've gone, and they build a platform, and several planks under that platform to run against that person. If this board moves in another direction, and the battle cry is, well, we're going to do what other people are doing, and let, just let the voters decide that, I think that that will automatically win, I want to say that right now. I think that, I think the voters would say, yep, let's just go with that, I do believe that. But if we sat and discussed the merits and waited out, like, based on their opinion of their senators, I think it might be, I think it might be drastically different, because it wouldn't be as much of a popularity contest. Because quite frankly, if you have four board, board members come, three come do, it, it will truly be a popularity contest, because there's no, why not run? There's no contest. If I get it, I get it, if I don't, I don't. Or if you've got to actually call someone out and say, I don't want to run against Randy Boyce. It's a gamble, I do not do that. But that has to, that gives, you have, I had to give some thought. I had to, and I'm giving my own personal reason. I had to give some thought, is to say, do I agree with everything that Randy's doing this year? No, I call a poll, that's why I'm not talking about outside of school. Do I agree with everything Randy said this year? Do I agree with everything that Randy voted this year? No. There is possibility that I'm going to be seated, and I'm going to be working with Randy again. Yes. I would rather go in that direction and make that decision, make that educated decision about this. Now, let's go throw a box of beans at him, and see how it goes. And that's, that's probably one of the biggest pieces, because after the election is over, we've all got to kind of move through this one. And I know there are a lot of people that thought, well, if you go back on the board again, you're not going to, you won't go over those folks. But you were off, and you were, and I, and I disagree with those people. Some of them even voted for me, and said that, you're going to, but I disagreed, and said, you know what, we'll eventually be able to do that. And that's, that's just my vote. So I wanted to get that out there, whatever you want to do in terms of calling for a vote at some point down the road, I just wanted to say that. I hope others have some more thoughts on this.
I mean, if you chose to want to get the vacant, if you want to call someone out, if you chose to run against the vacant seat, why do you want to just run against a person?
Just explain why I didn't want to run against a person. Just, I, I gotta, this is how I'm wondering why, this is now the third time you've mentioned this about me. I, I mean, I just want to clearly point that what I'm talking about conceptually is about senate, assembly, house of representatives and senate. So at this point, I can see where you've gone with this, maybe you could open up on some civics.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, which would create a proposition to be in the ballot in the May, the school board voting election, to change our procedure to at-large voting from what currently is the district? All opposed? Obstain?
I'm going to abstain, because we've not had enough conversation to make an intelligent vote.
All of you, I figure, are on the email list, but I just thought I would remind you that there is some people from the county trying to resurrect the Swoode County School Boards Association, although I hope you're all getting those emails. They have a meeting in town, you know, it's set for September twenty-ninth, four, six-thirty. And if you're all interested in that, make sure you reply to Jan Smith, Central American School Boards Association. Do that, you know, I think it's probably something that would be very good for our county, and, you know, it gives a chance to collaborate with the school boards in our county.
Is that separate from what we put a representative on?
Trina is the representative, I know she's expressed, she's, I am, and I am, but, like I said, they're trying to resurrect this, to get, of course, as many people as they possibly can. And you can just contact Pearl, and Pearl will take care of your registration if you'd like to attend that. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just wanted to ask, I noticed in a couple of things that happened from you, Joe, on different events that have happened, that board members have attended, and I didn't receive notification of those events ahead of time, or an invitation, and I just was wondering how that is decided. For example, I guess would be the new teacher orientation, I believe, that Trina attended and spoke, personally, from on, and then the open, our first day of school, I believe you and this industry, and Lori, went around and visited the classrooms, and I, I would have really enjoyed doing that as well. I think as a new member, it would have been an excellent opportunity for me to go into all of the buildings and maybe meet some of the administrators there. I'm quite disappointed that that happened, and I hope we can give an opportunity for us to participate, so I guess I was wondering what is the procedure there?
I was given the opportunity because I called and said I'd like to do it.
Okay. Well, did you do it, do you want to visit this school?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And it's far from a teacher orientation. It's been a tradition that president or the vice president has fond welcomed the new teachers. Like Lori, I subbed in for Lori when I was vice president, Trina subbed in for me this year.
Okay. So, I mean, but it's something I could have attended if I had known it would happen.
Absolutely, we've had more of the president, vice president in the past.
I mean, I really enjoyed opening day, I was able to go to that, and I appreciated the invitation to that, and I would like to be back to the top role, though. I'm sure. The reason I went on opening day is I, I, well, I'm just playing myself. I would, I usually go to opening day on Tuesday, when the teachers are out here, and I didn't, wasn't able to attend on Tuesdays, so I took the day. And then I asked Joe and Dick if I could go with that.
Sir, as Lori had said that, my response back to, to her, this guy, you've been around a long, we both know what we can just go to on our own, and what we have to be acquainted to. But I think being a new board member, or, you know, maybe we want to be more collaborative as a board to, I could have reached out to you and said, hey, are you going? I didn't, and certainly I think that that's something that we should probably, my opinion, that we should probably get a little bit more collaborative with one another in opening day, and like, hey, I'm going to go, are you going to go, whatever, because we used to be that, we used to be that.
And I can make a greater effort to let everybody know. As far as opening day is, I would just like to take this opportunity, first off, you know, we went to every single school building, and things seemed to be running very, very smoothly. I want to take this time to thank all the residents of the buildings and grounds, as well as the meanest staff, because the buildings all look in excellent shape. I want to thank all the administrators for having things organized so well, and things running so smoothly. I also want to thank especially all the teachers for all the hard work and preparation, and the rooms was great, and every classroom we staffed, and kids were already engaged in learning, it was, it was really quite, quite the day. And so I just wanted to say I was very impressed, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, in that whole process for that day. Anything else, anybody? Moving on to item F, reports to the Board of Education. Mr. Bowden, Mr. Zeno, and Mr. Penrod, are you going to take this, or do you?
So we're here to do our annual presentation on the school district state assessment data from last year, and wanted to take a couple different approaches of looking at it with you. I know you can't see the numbers, and neither can I. But what I, what I wanted, no, what I wanted to point out with this slide is that this would be ELA, grades three, four, and five, and it's two years of grade three ELA, last year and this year, this year's scores. Red will be level ones, the yellow will be level twos, the light green will be level threes, and the dark green will be level fours. And the reason for the difference in length is because there were more questions on last year's third grade assessment than there were on this grade's third assessment, this year's third grade assessment. What's, what's notable about that is that those two columns that are smushed together under grade three don't look alike. However, the scale score from last year and this year that cuts off level three are identical. The scale scores that cut off level four are identical. The raw score points that go into those scale scores have changed behind the scenes. And they change a little this way, and they change a little that way, and they're only off by a question or two. But I wanted you to see, the test is very complex. I wanted you to see, kind of, there's a little guy behind the curtain that moves some things around, and, and makes it challenging to really understand what's going on.
I got to ask you, in your presentation, your presentations, all of them, why, why did we at least not go front, back, full page? If you wanted us to understand and say, I, 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 this is, frankly, this is insulting, I cannot read, nor can the audience see, none of my colleagues can read this. I, we had to pull it up at home, you can magnify it up, at a minimum, it should have been front, back, full page, so that we could look at this.
I, I didn't, I didn't.
I don't know who pulled up the presentation, but what it is, it's, I'll speak only to myself. It is not the first paper it's on, because I can't read it. If you want us to see it, if you want to be with you, we, nobody reads this.
Okay, well.
I can't read that, either.
Yeah, it is, it's difficult, but as, as important as the numbers are that are on there, I think it's even a little bit more important, just the color bar. You can see in the third grade, actually, look for, look at the middle one. The, the reds are level ones, in the left and the right, they're all identical. And it would, it took the same number of questions to get the same number of questions right to cut off between the red and the yellow last year as it did this year. But this year, it took fewer questions to get right before you turned green compared to last year. So it maybe was a little bit easier to get a level three this year, in the middle column on the right-hand side. And maybe it was a little easier to get a level four this year than it was last year. But the scale scores stayed the same.
And these are last year's third graders, now these?
They're, now, this is fourth grade assessment from last year, and fourth grade assessment from last year. Same, same exact assessment, two different years long. It's not a cohort, no. It's how they scored the assessment, how they made raw scores into scale scores, and into performance levels.
I would just, frankly, I'm saying that a grade score, I mean, if you were a level one, you might have had a few more to have.
This isn't our performance, this is how they scored the test, this is how they scored it. This is our performance.
So it's like you're no, or this is where you fall, okay, this is just in raw, this is like a scale that I have a grade on it, yes?
Yes, yes, this is how they scored it. Scale score has stayed the same, but the raw scores have went through a change. And that's really the only point here. How they went up and down, who knows? But, and why they did it, because some of the test items have proved to be difficult, and some of them proved to be easy, and they can't see the full picture until they collect all the assessments. Then they move things around and get it to an end later.
So this field was something you next year, as well, you didn't get on this year, and I'll just say, and you put a level difficult question, and maybe you're right.
Right, right.
All right, so, same idea, the numbers on there, whether or not you can read the numbers is not, is not really the point, it's the difference from year to year, how easy or how challenging it is to get a level one, two, three, or four. And you can see pretty consistently, from the previous year's scores, that it was a little, there were more, should have been more level ones, and fewer level ones this year, because there was fewer questions to get, to get out of that man. And in eighth grade in particular, on the slide that shows, it was a little harder to get a level four. So they're manipulating that stuff, and there's some questions, again, grade six and grade seven, there's a different number of questions, and some of them may have been field questions, or some of those may have been questions that they chose to admit from the test, because after they did their analysis, they said, okay, these questions are going to work very beneficial, and they gave us the business reason that we need to know information. So we're going to exclude them, so that we can cover this, why, it's different numbers. The tests, the construct of the tests were the same, but they may not have used all the questions.
Okay, so that's all, just behind the scenes, what goes into raw scores into scale scores and performance levels. This is the picture of the map, and you can see, it's much more challenging in grade four this year to get a level three than it was last year. And it's much more challenging to get a level four this year than it was last year, because you had to get more scale score, more raw score points in order to get into that color bar, as you can see it.
And, yeah, same idea for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. What is interesting is that they didn't make any changes from year to year on the eighth grade. Apparently, they were pleased with the results that they were getting, when they, they did the analysis, was okay, we're in a good spot with this, and so we're not going to change it.
Okay, so then we get to, yeah.
I'm just looking to your thoughts, actually. Do you think some of the skill here changed on the grade four and five of Nancy Hudson, or did that show in the comment form, where, as we would ask them to do multiple ways to show your work, you know, two different ways to show something, instead of writing it out, or showing it in the actual, whatever, differently?
It's hard to tell, it's hard to tell why they chose to, to make it more difficult to get a level two, more difficult to get a three, more difficult to get a four this year than last year. And when we showed growth over last year across the state, so even though it's harder to get, we still showed growth, and, I don't know.
I'm just wanting to have a look, and start seeing some of the, you know, some of the changes. Do you think it really came in on the board, in the math, and you know, like, you were right?
So these, these numbers are not a reflection of anything in our school.
Nope.
Whoever this is, nothing more, and this is where you had to get, or to get to a certain level.
Yes.
If you use that, although that number is where the red line stops, not here yet.
That's right.
The last school district specifically.
Right, statewide, yeah, it's how this scored it. Okay, this is our performance. And this slide here is ELA, grades three, well, three, three ELA, three math, four ELA, four math. And you can see that we are the red bar, the black bar is the state average, and the rest of the gray bars are our co, or our colleagues in Swoode County, or city, as they're being called now. So third grade ELA, with twenty-nine percent of our students getting level three and four in the state assessment, we turn out by far in first place in Swoode County. Third grade math, fifty-one percent, state assessment performance in levels three and four, and we were first place in the county, and we beat the state average. Fourth ELA, with thirty-one percent, we were first again in the county, and just below the state average. And in fourth grade in math, we were second in the county, and we were underperforming the state slightly.
Can you offer some thoughts on why that is? Some areas, we certainly exceeded the state, not even close, so, I mean... So, I mean, obviously, you can look at scalability, while large numbers, you know, if you're suffering there, some are anomalies, you can look at that in terms of corporate math and flexible exam, or you can see that there's overthrews there, we just crushed it. But what are your thoughts in each of these four categories, as to how we trend versus the state versus the county?
It's hard to say. It's hard to say, you know, 29%, nobody would ever look at 29% levels three and four and pat yourself on the back over it, except for when you take a look at the rest of the county and we really, really did well comparatively. There's, there's a new level of performance, that's a new level of expectation that's required now at the state level. Our first grade, wow, I'm proud of that. You know, 51% of our students, third grade math, that, that's amazing. We outperformed the statewide, and we outperformed the state more in third grade math than we did in fourth grade math. I, I don't know.
It would be, it's just important at least to, when we're doing this stuff, constantly working, and then, and then, it's, 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 it's hard to stop and continue. So when you see this, the data, rather than just assess over the data and the data alone, it's really where the drivers, where the drivers that are getting us to be, this is an indicator. So it's great, I can see the indicator here, and I can tell whether or not it's an anomaly or whether it's statistically appropriate. But the real meat and nails for us is to, is to start stopping and thinking, what is it that got us, what is it that puts us, we crush this account in, you're right, it's only a 29. So I get what you're saying, you don't want to pat yourself on the back too much, but it here is, it's just that much further ahead of everybody. What is it that we did, and can we just do more of that to continue to outpace them? Or what is it that they're not, we can study either, what are we doing and what are they not doing? And both of those can be helpful to us. It just seems that we, it just seems that that would be important for us to know about in this sense.
And that's, that's kind of the next step for, for us, is to go back and teach, this is a very broad, you know, 100 miles above the sky, up in an airplane looking down, and we have to drill down further as more information from assessments become available. And, okay, so we did fantastic compared to everybody else in third grade math, but what items did we do better on? What was the content that we did better on? How do we teach that? Why did our kids grasp that, but they may not grasp some other concept? And that's really a couple of layers down that we drill down further and further than individuals.
And can I just, I, if you look on page five also though, for the math history, you know, it says fourth grade, you can see the bar that says 38. Well, those same students would be the red bar for grade three, and at that point, they were at 47. So, so though that 38 seems good there, and better than other schools, what happened that we went from a 47 to a 38 with those 30 same students?
You're, you're, I think you're a couple of slides ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's bring that up, just here in a second.
Are you drilling down, like you say you're doing a test analysis, are you drilling down to, like, so you know how our district did in our grade, and you're now drilling down to, like, the good school and teachers and students?
Right down to student level. Yeah, this, this year, we got a lot of pressure from everybody in this room and on the state. They've decided to release 50% of the state assessment questions for us this year to take a look at, yes. So we are able to take a look at some of the questions that we really outperformed the county in, and some of the questions we really underperformed the county in, drill right down to each individual classroom and find out which teachers were teaching that concept well, which teachers maybe underperformed a little bit, get them together, and improve our performance. So that's, that's where this takes us as a school district, that's where we go with it. We improve student scores, we improve student learning with it. But for this purpose, we're just kind of trying to take a look at.
So that, that is the point, we're not, we're not, that is the plan, like, in order to, in order to, like, be able to measure that? I mean, I was going to, back to students now, seeing how they're doing.
Mrs. Uway, can I ask, oh, you picked up the same time, huh? Sorry. My answer is, sure. I was dying to get in there somewhere. I can't comment to the rest of the county, about the rest of the county, but I can't speak and say that I am proud of Central Square and their efforts county-wide and how they compare. Brent said it, and you were just saying it, we really, really dig into our data. As soon as we get these results, we dig right down to the student and our teachers work really hard in their teams, with their principals, to really find out what's working, and if we're not teaching it correctly, if a question is wrong, what can we do to teach it better in the future? So that, those team meetings that we have, and that collaboration that we have in each of our schools, along with spending some time on our conference days and dismissal days to do that grade, whole grade level wise as a district helps as well, getting input from each other. I think another point that needs to be said is that Central Square, in our means to always be fiscally smart, has never been one to jump on the bandwagon of a new program or just pick new things up to try and improve. We've really tried to take in the past couple of years now, our modules and domains, and not just accept them in as, okay, this is it, this is what we're teaching, but this is what we have. We have groups of math experts comprised of teachers and administrators of the district and ELA as well, to really take a look at every assessment and, and check it every couple of weeks, benchmark it, so that we don't keep, just keep going forward and then find out when it's test time where we didn't do well. So there are a lot of things that are going on right, and a lot of teachers and principals are working hard, and of course, our students as well, to get these types of results in the county. And for that, I'm very proud of all of it.
Brent, did you say they've allowed 50% in providing 50%?
Yes.
What's the big mystery around that? Kirk, why won't, what is the, that's what you're fighting to get to 50%? Is that accurate?
It's financial, yeah. Last year, they released like 20% of the test items. This year, it's 50%. And they tried to get 100%, but the, the regions wouldn't authorize the expenditure. So it costs money to pilot these test questions, it costs money to, to create all new ones over and over and over again. And so it's financial at the state level. There used to be a time that every single state assessment question was available to us so that we could look at it, we could kind of analyze the question, why, why were our students underperforming? What, what can we do differently in the classroom? Every single question. And then it changed, and we got nothing.
How long ago was that, Scott?
The, three years ago. And we got nothing the first year, we got 20% the second year, and we got 50% this year.
And again, that was one of the greatest pieces of the state assessment when they first came out, is that we could look at all the test questions, dig into it, and as, as these people are pointing out, where do we do well? Where, where do we, where, we might struggle a little bit, who does it well? And try to find out what they're doing that makes them do it so well. And then when they took that away, and it was a financial situation, they said the cost of creating the test questions was too expensive.
Because the reality is, is that they're looking for normalization, they're looking to, and once you start to look at it exactly a while, they will start to level off or restart to be able to train in the same way, and then they'll have their case, they will have their ethical case, so that they can start to steer to where they were in the team and build it all into the different domain of testing classes. So I just, all there's huge differences right now, all there's different gaps, it's outstanding what we're getting here, and it's great that we're digging in and trying to understand our results, that's the whole purpose of it, and not just as a, not just to pure, they were, or to give all kinds of praise, but it's also to look and see how we're doing against these other cohort groups. And if there are, is somebody in Asuato County that's just knocking the cover off about, how'd they do it? And if it's, you know, and yet, they must be doing the same thing that we're doing, right? They must be doing the same things. And it just seems like maybe we can get City, right?
Yes.
But I think the ones they said, yeah, not City. Maybe they could lead, maybe they could lead, lead that. Maybe Greg, some of you could go back and ask if they've done any, if they've looked at any, gathered this, so we can understand it.
Yep.
All right. Fifth through A3, math, ELA, and, excuse me, fifth and sixth, ELA in math, information, similar things, where we rank in the county compared to the state. We are red, the state is black, and you can see the rest of the county also displayed there. And that's provided six, eight.
But you're also good in sixth grade math.
Not, definitely not as good.
That's a good area to be there, and tell her what's in that.
It's definitely an area we're looking at, because we think it's a group band in ELA as far as looking at, separate re-class. And traditionally, that math has been an area of strength for us, so as we started looking at, okay, where, where we're going now, that's also going to be really focused on. Traditionally, sixth grade math has been a strong area for us. Same sort of thing shown here in seventh and eighth grade, some places closer to the rest of the county, some places we're a little, we're a little behind. One thing I definitely like to point out, there's a lot of concern from parents, a lot of concern from teachers, a lot of concern from everybody about the number of assessments students we take. So we had a decision to make last year because there was integrated algebra regions, there's kind of core algebra regions that are accelerated eighth grade math students could take, and continue to do in the early stage eighth grade assessment, and we made the decision to give them the best possible opportunities to pass their math reasons to council or high school, they would take both math reasons, and we did not have them take the eighth grade math assessment. So the 60 to 61 students that were left out of that math aid number, probably would have pushed it significantly higher. I took a little informal poll of our colleagues around the county, and some did that and some did not do that. And, but it's very apparent, 60 out of approximately 300 kids that are going, that are going to almost definitely test the assessment, go take it, and that's the huge impact of the percentage to the extent.
That's a good question to make, but maybe it was also where we had the most kids out of the assessment.
We, that is definitely where we had the most kids refuse, refuse the assessment. And some of that is also reflected in the eighth grade ELA score, because some of these students didn't refuse the assessment the first day, and they refused the assessment the first day, then they get no score, doesn't count for against the student, or against the school, or against the teacher, or they took the first day and then they brought in their letter, or the first and second day and then they brought in their letter. What they took was scores and they sat in the entire assessment. And it's definitely, it definitely impacted those numbers across all, across the grades.
Would the other schools have some, some part of that, if they're taking third and all, and also the schools?
Yeah. Yes, I would say ours were significantly lower than those schools.
For off state, they are not very, so they're all very, 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 very.
I don't know, I don't know. I went to meetings, I went to meetings here and said, or presented, and people looked at me way back, made up a number.
I know, I know. It looks like, it looks, yeah, it looks like it's going to, you know, it's, it's different.
Okay, now, this is what you were referring to earlier. This would be year over year, last year's state assessment, ELA third grade, and this year's state assessment results, ELA third grade. You can look at it that way, or you can look at it from the red bar to the green bar. From the red bar in grade three to the green bar in grade four would show a cohort, cohort group of students that took the test third grade, and then again, took the test fourth grade. So you can kind of see third grade, our, our percentage of pass rate declined, but if you go back, you can see we're number one in all of Asuato County on our third grade assessment performance even this year. And so it kind of tells, tells a story, third through eighth grade, ELA. So the question, the question was why?
I just wanted to point out, I mean, you might look at that 38 and say, what are we doing so well? We should do that somewhere else, this is great. But then if you look at it and say, well, those same kids had 47 last time, maybe we also need to look at what has changed that maybe wasn't so positive. Because if you only look at it, there's a lot of chat at last, and it just looks like we're doing better than, you know, than other schools, but obviously something changed that, 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 that.
Yeah, sure. And there, there are a lot of moving parts, there were outsides this year that we didn't have last year. There, there's a difference in scale score.
Right, exactly, I just noticed, that was one of the ones that had the biggest jump, I think, for probably getting a greater score, so.
And the same chart for math, again, to look at individual grade level and how they performed on the assessment, or even look at cohort to cohort, like the, the red, the assessment rating to the green rating. But that gives some idea of the trend in cohort, cohort.
And then our, our science, this would be grade four science, if you stack the green and the blue together, that gives us our pass rate, and the numbers are down below to make it easier, our pass rate this year was somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 91% on the state assessment and grade four science.
Uh, for any science, if you had 43 and 36, you end up somewhere around 79%, which is about 10% lower as far as students passing the assessment. Now, say, that's an area where test refusals definitely played a role for a couple of reasons. But one is the impact of the percent, of percentages, when you take that, that number of students out, you're, makes a definite impact. And there were fewer refusals for science than there were for the other content areas, but they definitely seem to be a trend in some of the students that we technically see in three or four based on test results.
Do you get the, do you get to see those, um, questions, the science questions?
Science questions are not secure, so yes, we could get to see that, and we will eventually begin an analysis from the state as far as where our utilities can compare to part of the test, and perform as part of the test, so we can look at it and say, okay, where do we compare our counties to county, where do we compare the state, what are, what are our, right, what are our, what are our.
Actually, jumping to the fact that as a parent, I think that when you, when you know that your child's taking a test, and it is, and it's not only their education that matters, and the people that are, are working with them, I think that's probably why you shouldn't see as many reasons for the science test, because you are getting all that feedback, and I think, you know, some of these test where you aren't able to utilize them like you've been able to do in the past, I think that's part of why they're pushing into these tests, and people are opting out because the benefit for the student and, and the administration and their legacy in the past, and it's kind of hard for parents to find a way to say that that's not okay, other than opting out.
And that, that's one of the, obviously, one of the concerns with, with the refusal says it doesn't allow us to do as good a job of analyzing data and see where our strengths and our weaknesses are.
Right, but if you don't have all the, all the information anyway, it's, you're still kind of, so much less.
Right, and, and definitely 50% is better than 20%, which is better than 0%, but we'd like to show, see all the questions.
And maybe some of the opting out will get the state to open up the rest of it, I mean, maybe that'll be where it goes.
We do see, I have no idea what I was about to say. We did, we definitely are trying to get the word out that there is a reason behind taking, that's one of the things, we, there's no purpose in doing these, although they have to be a great purpose because in that period, they definitely help us analyze and see what's going on in our curriculum, in our content, and that allows us to make adjustments to see, you know, what do we need to improve on, what gaps are there in the curriculum, what are we not doing now, or should we?
Right, it sounds like it's setting in the research over the last, you know, for three years.
Yeah, hopefully, they make reasons.
He's getting a decent education.
Because you do know that so many opt out, and so many don't opt out now, have you been able to take down all that, you know, numbers that have been counted before, based on like their grade, their college performance, the overall Swedish? Would you, have you been able to measure a test, that would have bumped up the numbers that, or this thing, that because they probably would have gotten three before?
I haven't, I haven't done it.
Do you know that?
I haven't done a formal assessment, you know, based on all test scores, but there's definitely, in science, there's definitely a feeling because of some of the stuff that's going on, and those students would have definitely benefited the district's results in science. And ELA and math, it was a little bit, I can't tell, depends what we, we talk to, but we do have the, we do have the ability to look at that, and that, and that's also the backside, and manage that, here, here, this, and, 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 I think overall, yes, we, we definitely, back students would, that's the mass result, or, or, you know, and. I think overall, yes, we will have the impact, students would, that's what we want, but the, and that's my, what a majority of the hits.
Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have other data and other ways to identify, as to where the performance goals are. Everything that serves us, I mean, if they call fire, I need to get services, and so on. It's not, everything's not just based on state events.
That's very true, it's not just based on state assessment. And we've recently got, and we've gotten some, called transparency, and why is my student A I S, I suppose, that they have to take the state assessment? There's other data that shows that they're lacking in their skills in science, just that. We've never, if recently, randomly used one data, so we do have other, other.
There, there is a, a document that the state puts out every year that gives a minimum scale score that will require A I S if you're below that. And it's in the level one range, and if you scored at that or below, then the statistic is required to give you A I S. And this is on the state, the state assessment. The problem with, with this is that some of the students, like Matt had said earlier, started the test and then refused A two. They scored a level one. The teacher got the score of a level one student, there would normally be a level three or four student in most cases. And now they're artificially highlighted as a student that needs A I S, even though they may be one of the top students in the class. So we're in the process of reading through those, trying to find which ones click early, and, and get those out of A I S because they don't belong there. And we're using that other data to, to try and relate, to make sure that we're making the right choices.
So you know they have to get scheduled, there are initially, there are uphill things in place, so that they can move away from that.
Yeah, we really, really need to stop doing that.
Are you going to be able to carry this for the governor, or no? Because I know that Pink Hill this year released a general letter that said your child may be A I S or a myth or an ELA, and let's just know, like, what criteria why is that?
In the middle school, we'll be doing it in A I S night, we're will, we're gonna go over how to read the state test reports and that kind of stuff. And I think this may be this early in October, I don't know about the doctor. October seventh, somebody doesn't own our doctor. And we're gonna go over those results then, and they'll be going home after that time, so they can get them that night, in the middle school.
Can everybody all move home after that if you're still on A I S?
Any other questions?
It's important, too, to know that none of the state assessment scores are used in grading of the students. None of them are being included on the report cards, they're not going to front at folders, they're just diagnostic in nature. And next is Erin Nub.
Hi, everybody. So I've been charged with tasks for sharing the region's data for the two thousand and fourteen school year. As a, as a data newbie myself, I attempted to make it as easy to read and as seamless as possible. You'll basically see two slides for each actual exam. One will be, the first slide will be the actual longevity, so how they, the cores have done throughout the years. And then the next slide will show you essentially what, how we have to form the comparison to the state of county. So we're gonna start with English Language Arts. As you can see, the orange is the actual passing rate, and the blue is the mastery level, which would require an eighty-five or higher. The passing is an obviously sixty-five. So you can see that we fared well this year in English Language Arts, which is excellent. And in comparison to the actual Sua County, again, I am proud to say that for the most part, almost all of the region's exams, we did very well in comparison to the county and the region as well.
When you say ELA, is that for, from the three regions?
Yes, ma'am, it's the, the grade eleven, English. Moving on into the math category, we're gonna start with L two and TRID. Again, we stay pretty consistent from year to year, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, and our mastery leveled up, meaning those students achieved eighty-five percent or higher. In comparison to the Sua County, again, we're right on target in comparison to the rest of schools. Pretty good, any questions so far? No? Geometry, we went down a little bit on the passing rate, but nothing to be concerned about, I don't think. I mean, comparison, when we compare to the actual county itself, mastery would be on par with the passing comparison to previous years. Again, we're right on target with that particular subject. Integrated Algebra, stayed pretty much the same consistently. And again, within the county, we're still solid within county as well. Am I going too fast? Global History, while it looks a little bit poor here, not, not too bad, but then we went down a little bit. I would like to point out the mastery piece, I'm still pretty consistent, so that is one of the, as a history teacher myself, it is one of the actual more difficult exams, because it is a two-year exam. It doesn't, just covers one year of information, it covers two years of information. But as you can see throughout the county, we're still consistent in, in staying up top.
Erin, this is trips, I mean, consistently, and I have looked at the data at any time, too, and not even just compared it in our research. I mean, like, if you go north and stuff, they have the same effect, just global reading is so difficult, it's so difficult. At one point, the read, or was talking about getting rid of the global, those three regions, so where does that tend to go?
It's still in the works.
It's still in the works, that happening?
Yeah, it would be a huge curriculum shift to do that, they would have to figure out essentially what pieces would be most important and what level, and would they test, you know, just ninth grade or would they test tenth grade? So it is still in the works there.
It's just such, I don't, I don't know what it is about this region that is.
It's hard, it's very, very difficult. And, and you have to understand, too, that for the most part, as kids grow up through and, you know, through school, they're exposed to American history because they live in America. But when we're talking about, you know, global studies, it's a little bit more difficult, because those topics are not generally discussed at the lower levels. I do know that they're looking at shifting, and they actually have started to shift the actual exam itself. It used to be a lot of European history, and now it's more Asian history, African history, and so that's all. I mean, if you ever studied Asian history, it's very difficult to remember all those names and all the dates and stuff. So that is, that is the general shift that you have, that you would see, that's the current trend in the actual exam itself. Yeah, very difficult. U S history, kind of the same kind of stuff. The, we have significantly gone down, and we're actually looking at that. We do have offered, are we looking at this data in, in an effort to be proactive? We have opened up some more classes of A I S for history. You know, the high school administration team sat down and said, what can we do to better service our history students? And so we have opened up two or three more sections of actual A I S for history itself.
How is that, how is that for the two thousand and fourteen? And I still see the trend, ninety-three, ninety-one, dropped about eighty-two, seventy-nine, thirty, same thing. How do those two classes fare in years prior?
In years prior to?
Not the regions, they weren't taking the regions, but how did they do in that, in the same prior?
They did appear, and I actually asked before presenting, I asked the SAS and history, I said, you know, looking at this data, I actually definitely, I sat down with the SAS and said, what, what happened between these particular years that had such a, because that's a pretty sharp decline there. And so when we sat down with Amber Round, who was with Social Studies SAS, she said, you know, we had some personnel shifts, some people retired, some really strong teachers retired in those particular years, and we're still working on building up.
They're trying to, they're trying to better students.
Absolutely. Yes, yeah, so I would assume that those two things combined would be the result of that. But if you look at the data in general, we're still on par with the rest of the county and the region itself, between our levels.
I can, Cindy Creek is kicking her butt all the way across.
I know.
And I know it's a very small school, and you talked about maybe like, you know, fifty kids versus, you know, five hundred. And it does make a difference. However, across the board and multiple things.
Almost every subject.
What are they doing differently? How are they teaching it differently? Where Nazis have, it seems like, if ten percent of it is figured out by the probably, put that nine percent.
Correct, and, and the administration team, the high school discussed that, you know, and I know that Jeff goes to principal meetings within the county itself, and probably do that some. But I wouldn't imagine science does have anything to do with that. That's right.
Early voters, all their voters are, are local, a lot of their tax bases, you know, all that stuff on that place, like Southland, we covered in Elkhorn, all those big multi, half million dollar homes, none of them have a sale in school, but, you know, they're actually able to drive results.
Living Environment is also the Biology regions. I departed last year, the year before prior, mastery about the same as well. In comparison to the, to the county, we did fare as well in, in Living Environment, but I still don't think that it's anything to raise any red flags. However, in response to this, I can say that last year, one of the teachers came down and said, look, we need to start doing some recovery, some assistance for the students that are struggling. So there was kind of a pilot program last year, saw some success with it, and will continue that this year to see if we have more of an impact on how they perform on exams. We also have a bio, certified biology teacher in the environmental biology class, which is the precursor to biology itself. So we're hoping that also increases the scores. Earth Science, an improvement there, especially the mastery piece, which is excellent, and doing well within the county itself. Oh, I would like to point out, we did a point, we did merchandise.
Just like how, how we did that, we started franchise player, we pulled that franchise player. So next year, you won't have that start.
That's true, but I'm confident in the, the science department that they'll be able to, absolutely, they'll step up. I have no doubt. Chemistry, nice increase in chemistry from last year to this year, and still maintain across the county. Physics, slight decline, but still consistent with across the county.
How many kids stick with it?
I believe we have approximately sixty-two, sixty-five, between sixty-two and sixty-five. Are taking both of the exams, whereas everyone will be taking Earth Science and essentially everyone will be taking Biology. Um, they can take, you can get, you can still maintain credit, even if it's not a business. You could take Applied Physics, which does not take the actual region's exam. You could take Applied Chemistry, which is not the actual region's exam, so they can still receive the credit through those courses without actually taking the region's level exam. I would like to point out, we've done, there's a lot of data, a lot, I'm working on it, thanks to Dave, he's helped me, helped me through, weigh through the data. I do know that all of our departments do a data analysis on all of the exams. Essentially what that is, that kind of drives what they were saying, you know, it looks at the questions, it looks where some of our teachers have our strengths, and how they, you know, they share out, and how they teach those actual concepts. We've worked on some smart goals for the teachers this year, really asking our teachers to focus on an area within the classroom instructionally that they can improve upon, so that's something we're looking forward to this year. And we also are lucky enough to have two administrative interns this year as well. And with those two interns, we are hoping to have them be able to really focus that on somewhere adverse students, and really kind of meet with them on a more consistent basis, that we are able to do so, and see if that also exists. So overall, very proud of.
Thank all three fifty of the presentations. Moving on to our agenda, moving on to I O G. There's one item there, we'll go to I O G. Discussion on I O G. There's no discussion, all in favor, please, for I O G. Nobody's opposed, thank you. We have a consent agenda. Anybody need further consent, I'd say you pull well, that's a good, I'd say ask for. I O G in its entirety? Any discussion on I O G? No discussion, all in favor of I O G, please? Thank you. I am mine for now. I think our motion approved, it's ground, second. Any discussion here, all in favor, please, Jim? Thank you. I O G, if you're right to the motion, including the articles written on your agenda. Any discussion? There will be no actions, I'll thank you all for coming to our meeting.